This is our regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, being held on April 12th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks. Are here, present, I'm sorry.
Brightwell.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Morris.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cruz.
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum, the mayor, city administrator, and deputy city administrator and other department heads are also present on the line. Thank you. Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll have our presentations. Our first presentation is that of the Capital Improvement Program. This will be presented to us by Terry Crowde, our planner, but this is just for us to view and for discussion tonight. Terry?
Yep, thank you. Every council member should have received the PowerPoint presentation as well as draft working document. This will be brought back to your April 26th meeting for adoption under consent. But I wanted to just start out by saying that this has been a multi-month process, starting in December with staff review. Planning Commission held a long-range studies meeting in February. It then went to the Council Finance Committee. Including all the departments were involved in a three-hour study session with the Planning Commission. Then the Planning Commission reviewed the draft report, made a recommendation to Council on the 24th after public comment. And today, we're here as a presentation in advance of your April 26th meeting. Next slide. So as Council is familiar by now that this is an annual report presented to Council. It's a six-year plan with the first year representing the current budget. And years two through six are projected on best estimates by each department. The capital, not all capital expenditures are included typically over $5,000 or greater. But specifically, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires physical improvements that are permanent in nature and substantial equipment purchases be reviewed in the plan. The CIP is beneficial to the community because it's a systematic evaluation of all potential projects. It involves coordination between various departments and is a uniform plan for financing as a guide to Council when they're reviewing each year's budget. Next slide. As I stated, this is not only a requirement of the State Planning Enabling Act, but also as part of our redevelopment-ready certification. Next slide. And the Capital Improvement Program shall show those public structures and improvements within a six-year period based on priority. And each department of the city does provide their list of improvements that get incorporated into the plan. And city administration, especially in the last several years, has made sure that any budget requests have to be tied in with the Capital Improvement Program. Next slide. Our last CIP was adopted in May of 2020. A full copy of the document is available on the city's website under the Planning Department homepage. Next slide. And as I stated, this process starts each December of every year and runs approximately five to six months until Council adopts it prior to their budget discussions. Next slide. There are eight major areas that the CIP covers: equipment, facilities, water and sewer, stormwater and floodplains, parks and recreation, data management, roads and bridges, and pedestrian enhancements. Next slide. Next slide. I'm going to try to do a 30,000-foot overview and focus more on public improvements as opposed to major purchases. But all of those items are outlined in this report as well as in the PowerPoint presentation. The Police Department has recommendation to upgrade their 20-year-old mobile command center. Next slide. They also have a request to upgrade their general purpose armored vehicle. Next slide. But the physical improvements do get into renovations of existing facilities, including their firearms range. Next slide. Which includes concrete and flooring repair as well as repairs to walls, ceilings, balusters, hanging target mounts, and sound reduction panels. Next slide. Prime Lab also needs some significant renovations and remodeling to get up to standards. Next slide. As well as the dispatch center. The dispatch center hasn't received any updates in 12 years. And they have projected capital improvements over the next couple of years totaling about $135,000. Next slide. The fire department keeps a very detailed inventory of each of their vehicles. Not only the amount of miles driven, but all kinds of maintenance issues with each vehicles. And they compare them to national standards as far as life expectancy. So the miles that are listed are not typical car miles, but they are miles that are listed for each of the vehicles depending on their function within public safety. Next slide. They also have provided a five-year capital improvement plan with regards to vehicle purchasing and maintenance over the next five years depending on the age, maintenance, and current best practices within their department. Next slide. The fire department's equipment can be broken down into three main areas. That includes medical, fire, and miscellaneous. And they have also provided a five-year forecast of where their needs are. Next slide. Also, facilities, they directly reflect the city to the taxpayers. And they have diverse functions including housing, recreation, administration, equipment and vehicle storage and maintenance, training components, community education, and hazardous material storage. In times of crisis, they can provide safe refuge for citizens and visitors of Southfield. And the chief and the department believe it's important to take a proactive approach in replacing exotic items and elevating to cost-efficient equipment. Next slide. There are five stations that are located strategically throughout the city. The average age of the stations is 40 years. They've had limited major maintenance over these past decades. And the facilities are now showing decades' worth of wear and outdated infrastructure. Next slide. This is a map showing the locations of each of the five fire stations that are equally distributed based on response and function throughout the city. Next slide. I've highlighted in this station-by-station comparison those that require major physical updates, including Fire Station Two next year. They're requesting a storage building be installed as well as in Station Five. There are significant upgrades to their training facilities. Most of the other items are small in nature compared to these two major investments. Next slide. Administration also has a responsibility for facilities maintenance. And last year, due to COVID, was a lost year. Beachwood's Pro Shop roof is projected, is the only project to be projected to be completed in this fiscal year. Next slide. And OHM, one of the city's consulting engineers, did provide a full facilities assessment study. I don't know if that's been finally adopted, but they did look at all the various facilities and recommendations for energy efficiency, renovations, modernization, and improvements. Next slide. Facilities also tracks the investments made, which over the last two and a half years totals over $30 million. And total investments needed, which is in excess of $33 million. And they know that deferred maintenance is still a major concern and that additional cost analysis will be needed on a case-by-case basis. Next slide. Some of the positive improvements over the last year is that customer safety barriers were installed at all the major counters throughout the city. Campus security has been improved. And as the deputy city administrator has previously presented, the police escalator project removal and replacement has also moved forward. Next slide. With regards to DPW and the motor pool, DBW states that two supervisor vehicles are needed. Miscellaneous salt spreaders, water department backhoe, DPW trailer, and other accessory vehicles are required. One utility truck in traffic engineering. Police Department has various replacement vehicles. Streets and highway require three dump trucks and one van. And the Water Department is looking for one dump truck, two pickup trucks, and three vans. Next slide. Next department is Water and Sewer. Next slide. This is a map of the various sections within the city of Southfield and projections for water main and road replacements over the next five fiscal years. I believe the Council is somewhat familiar with these projects, but here's a summary list of what's projected based on funding and priorities. Next slide. Roads and Bridges, next slide. Also with roads and bridges, Section 35 is under Phase Two development this year. Beach Road from 8 to 10 mile will be under reconstruction. Nine-mile road from Evergreen to northbound Northwestern Highway. Green Trees, south. 12-mile road from Losser to Evergreen is being undertaken with cooperation of the Road Commission of Oakland County. As well as MDOT has a project on Telegraph Road and the Eight Mile Interchange. Those are all scheduled for 2021 construction season. Next slide. Other projects are highlighted over the next three to five years. Based on the color-coded key here, you can see where the city is planning on these renovations throughout our various sections. Next slide. Stormwater floodplains, next slide. Stormwater management has continued to evolve. There's greater focus on non-traditional ways to treat stormwater. The state regulatory requirements are being treated as part of new regulations that the city will be beholden to. And wherever possible, the department is coordinating with other departments to balance and leverage funds for these projects. Next slide. Some of the major projects that the Council may be familiar with is the Tamarack Basin River Restoration Project, which is EPA-funded. Rouge Green Infrastructure and Tree Planting Project, and Stream Bank and Infrastructure Erosion at the Beach Road Lift Station. Next slide. Parks and Recreation, I know they're updating their master plan. We've worked closely with them on our public input through our master plan for Beachwoods. But they have extensive acreage that they're responsible for maintaining, over 770 acres of parkland. They have one nine-hole golf course and a driving range that's currently active. They have several facilities. The Beachwood Recreation Center, as you're aware, has seen several years of renovations. They're also responsible for historical properties and over 330 acres of dedicated natural area within the city, as well as two cemeteries. Next slide. They have three main focus areas in their mission statement: safety, events and program, and service delivery needs and user feedback. Next slide. Within those goals, they have charted out their capital improvement needs for the next several years, which are listed here. The most immediate needs are listed in 2021. And moving forward, over our next two to three years includes playground replacement and refurbishment at various parks throughout the city. Beachwood's master plan, Phase Two. Berg Park fencing, citywide tennis courts, repair and resurfacing, as well as some lighting enhancements at Sims Park. Next slide. Within the city, we also have the data management systems. Next slide. So the technology services is responsible for three major core competencies available: availability of resources, uptime, and security. Their following capital improvement projects include improvements to the INET, having uninterruptible power supply during emergencies, creating firewall replacements and protection for the city's computer system. Next slide. Computer and data center replacement. Many of the older desktop computers are replaced to keep up with software demands. The police fleet technology replacement, as well as the Eden financial system that many departments rely on. Next slide. They also are responsible for document management software. Cisco switch replacements, which deal with phones and power to each desk. And also upgrades to increase in speed with the Bluetooth capability of our phone systems and voicemail. Next slide. And then finally, planning business development rounds out our eight categories. The Centropolis Accelerator, Ms. Freeman has talked about some of the grants and potential projects at the Centropolis Accelerator, including prototyping lab and supplies, upgrades of existing space equipment, and building out with a five-year lease with Oakland County, Michigan Works, and some additional furniture amenities for our conference room. Next slide. Pedestrian enhancements, next slide. We work closely with engineering in particular to leverage funding whenever there's a road project that also needs pedestrian enhancements and upgrade. As the Council is aware, we have been successful in receiving some safe routes to school. Spearheaded by our city treasurer, I believe we received over $600,000 the last couple of years. We have focused on sidewalk gap infill and creation of bike lanes wherever feasible. One of the other areas that comes up is the need for additional street lighting and how that's going to be paid. Next slide. The Council established the Arts Commission back in 2014. And they are working on fundraising, restoration, maintenance, and installation of various public art installation throughout the city. City Center and the Planning Department has worked closely with the city on creating additional bike paths and a bike share system. And again, all departments, DPW, engineering, and planning, have worked on gap infill of our streets, gate sidewalks, and pathways, and providing pedestrian amenities to encourage use and accessibility. Next slide. I'm going to do a more detailed presentation on pathways in the next presentation, but we wanted to include this as part of our master plan where we do look at non-motorized transit as well as bike and pedestrian foot traffic. The map on the right shows still major gaps in our pedestrian system that equal at least a half a mile or greater. So all the strides that we've made, we still have major areas of the city along major routes that still have major gaps for pedestrians, persons with disability, and lower-income individuals who rely on walking or public transit to get to health, education, and employment opportunities. Next slide. The City Center, working closely with the city, has adopted five-year master plans for the improvement of pedestrian amenities, trails, wayfinding, and signage. And again, I'll get into that a little deeper in our next presentation, but we feel that this has been a good model for other areas in the city for the Council to consider. Next slide. And this is just a little more detailed look at some of, on the left is what we call Goat Pass. So these are areas that have no pedestrian sidewalks or pathways at all, but people continue to travel along those routes. They're inhospitable. The automobile kind of dominates both in sound and in speed. And there shows a need for pathway enhancements because the pathways have been tritten down by pedestrians over multiple years. And the photo on the right just shows one of these half-mile gaps that still remain within the city center that we'll be talking about a little bit later. But this is the last piece in a 1.75 square mile area that has no pedestrian connectivity at all. Next slide. These are also areas throughout the city that have been reinforced through our public input session of the master plan, that areas that people have identified as needing improved pedestrian access for safety, for accessibility, and for heart-healthy activity. Next slide. One other area that scored very highly in our recent public input is having a pedestrian trail along the Rouge River from 12-mile road down to 10-mile. I believe the city owns the majority of that right-of-way, the riparian area. And with major improvements that are scheduled for I-696 by MDOT, we believe that pedestrian underpass will be installed that will make it much easier for the city to connect point A to point B. There are also some significant gaps in the system south of West Nine Mile, along Northwestern Highway Service Drive and the M-10 Lodge Service Drive that eventually could eye into any redevelopment at Northland Center. Next slide. Here's just some of the comments that we gathered out of the public comment session. Generally, we have had significant support by residents and respondents on pathway-on-trail development. 81% of respondents in one particular survey support or think it's very important for additional pathways and trail development in the city. Rouge River Greenway was a top pick in respondents' responses to where they would like to see additional development. 83% would like to see more sidewalks and bike paths. 90% want improved sidewalks, trails, and bike paths. Top four activities in parks, walking and running, with 79% of the respondents picked that, that is their highest, with 23% picking hiking and 23% picking bicycling. Healthy living priorities included more sidewalks and bike lanes to increase physical activity. That was 84% of respondents picked that as their number-one choice. And 78% said they want more recreation opportunities in parks and trails. As far as good public realm, comfortable sidewalks, roomy with pedestrian amenities, 70% of respondents was favorable to that. In continuous pedestrian routes, 64% of respondents chose that answer. Only 46% are satisfied with existing public sidewalk system. 30% are very unsatisfied. Only 25% are satisfied with bike paths throughout the city. 26% are unsatisfied. And then finally, 41% are satisfied with pedestrian amenities. And with regard to place-making, 45% would like to see more improved pedestrian connectivity and linkages throughout the city. Next slide. Again, these next few slides, I'm going to get into more detail on our next presentation. But signage and wayfinding are also important. After you get the physical pathway in, helping people to feel comfortable with where they're going, that they're on the right path, and how to get from point A to point B is important. Next slide. Again, the City Center is being used just as a model of a template of how to prepare a five-year master plan for pedestrian amenities and pathway improvements, as well as signage and wayfinding. Next slide. And this has been incorporated into the Northland vision that the community supports pedestrian access for various reasons. It builds community collision opportunities where you get to know your neighbor. It provides heart-healthy activity. It's good for accessibility. It's good for mental health, as well as physically connecting mixed-use developments to each other. Next slide. And we have previously presented a thorough review of existing bus stops and non-transit stops throughout the city and have prioritized based on current routes provided by MDOT and SMART, density, persons with disability located within a quarter-mile of the routes, persons of lower income or with one-car households or fewer, and overall ridership to identify where the priorities throughout the city. And we have developed a five-year capital improvement plan based on those priorities to cover all city bus stops throughout the community. Next slide. This is again part of our five-year cost estimate capital improvement plan that we're recommending that the Council consider. Next slide. So the grand total looks intimidating. It's over $1.6 million. But again, with a five-year strategy and breaking it down into smaller pieces of approximately $300,000 a year, we feel that we can address all 230 bus stops and use the money to leverage additional grants and partnerships with private businesses, with SMART, DDOT, as well as leveraging Metro Funds and CDBG Funds to address the missing pieces. Next slide. And then finally, the Council also asked us to look at gateway improvements to neighborhoods. So on the right is an example of one of the recently restored branding of Lumbergh Estates after receiving historic designation by National Historic Group. Next slide. So with that, Council, there are some supplementary slides that I've provided that weren't pertinent to the capital improvement plan but are important to each department. Those are included in your package. But I'd be happy to answer any high-level questions that the Council may have, but I would direct specific questions to the department heads between now and April 26th when we're asking you to adopt the plan. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Planner Crowde. Great presentation. I will ask the Council for any comments at this time that they'd like to share with you. And I'll start with you, Mr. Brightwell.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Chair, I really appreciate it.
Chair, I really appreciate this presentation. Am I proud if I dealt with your plan where we had to literally take a billion dollars a year investment on annual basis, a billion-dollar investment into our capital to keep the corporation current? I really appreciate this. This is, I like this. And I sincerely, in my first came on council, I do recall historically, there was a heavy lifting and trying to get certain things of this nature done. But let me just ask this, of course, this is very high level. With respect to your peer group, many cities are doing this to this particular extent.
Well, it is mandated by the State Planning Enabling Act, but I would say that not all communities follow the plan, or at least do it year by year. And prior to coming here, I know that the previous city administrator who had a finance background basically took on that role himself. And I believe that the plan is much stronger today because of the active involvement of all the various departments and then coordination with our finance team, as well as city administration's support of why this is important. And as you had correctly stated in the beginning, there was a lot of teeth-polling to get people to comply to provide the information. The information is only as good as what is presented to us. But the Planning Commission kind of takes that broad look at all the departments to make sure the right hand and the left hand are working together and that there are no conflicts with roads being built and then the next year being torn up for water and sewer. That's an oversimplification, but I think we're very sophisticated in leading the pack with regards to our capital improvement program. And we continue to strive to get better each year. And I am looking forward to working with Austin to get everything in a computer software package that can, you know, make sure that all the numbers work with the budgeting on a year-by-year basis. But we're very proud. Again, I want to recognize Sarah Malali from our team, who is the project manager and has to work on all the coordination. I want to, you know, recognize the Planning Commission for putting in a lot of time, the Finance Committee, and then ultimately the council, who has to absorb all this so they can make informed decisions with regards to adoption of the budget. And this way also, I believe, the council has a forecast of what these total cities' needs are from years two through six.
No, that's the answer I wanted, really. But when I first got on board and when I did sit in on council before, it was a heavy lift in trying to get this sophistication started. This is excellent. I think this is what every organization I've ever been in, we put four, always put four of these four little plans. Like I said, we had a five-year capital improvement. I can't remember exactly, it was a capital plan, a rolling five years. Every year, a billion dollars invested. And so that kept us fairly new. I think going forward bases that will keep Southfield fairly new. And if nothing else, we won't have the tail wagging the dog. But one other question. And I know the have we, have you, or has the organization which is trying to get Southfield recognized as being age-friendly, have they been in touch with, are you a congressman of what they're trying to do and what you're trying to do feed into we eventually being recognized by AARP as being age-friendly?
Yes, we've worked very closely with the committee. I assigned a team member, Planner Bryce, to sit on their regular meetings. And they have provided the report, which we will incorporate into our master plan. But there is a lot of overlap with being age-friendly, community, accessibility, pedestrian pathways and sidewalks. So I mentioned heart health activity. I'm going to talk a little bit about why it's important for economic development, why it's important for diversity, equity, and inclusion for multiple reasons. And as you rightly pointed out, it also is very important to our senior residents and being a more age-friendly community. And I believe when AARP first came out with their reports on livability index, the city of Southfield rated below 50%, meaning that more than half of the communities had a better livability index than the city. And through our concerted effort over the last five years, that needle has moved to the positive side, and we are now above the median with regards to livability. And I believe firmly it has a lot to do with our investment in the public infrastructure, the public realm, and pedestrian amenities.
I agree. I know it's below 50% right now. Question, or one final statement. And I do know one other something that, one other thing that we're doing citywide that is considered the best practice for our group, our peer group, regionally here in Southeast Michigan. And I feel that this probably can fall in that category at some point in time of being a best practice for our peer group. That was more of a statement as opposed to not necessarily a question I'm going to have to answer. But I appreciate it. And this is good, Chair. I like this, and this is very, very good from a management standpoint. And that's how I look at things from a global standpoint. Excellent. And I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and again, you know, I have to thank all of the department heads and their teams who actually compiled the report and work with Sarah on getting it into one document.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cruz.
I think Councilman Brightwell asked every question that could be asked at this point. So we know that Terry's coming back later. But this is pretty routine. He has made these presentations fast and done a fine job, great presentation, Mr. Crowe. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you. And I would say as well, I mean, this was, this really was a great presentation. It's so good to see all of our priorities on here. I just I just had a couple of questions. And I'm really looking forward to the next presentation because I know as I was going through this, one of the things that kind of kind of interested me was, for example, like this citywide bike trail system. And I'm really looking forward to hearing more about pedestrian, you know, pedestrian amenities and walkways and stuff. As you pointed out, it was something that came up, it was one of the highest things on the master plan surveys. So I'm looking forward to the next presentation. Just on this one, as far as leveraging other dollars, you know, we kind of talked about it last week, but have we started thinking about how maybe we can use the American Rescue Plan in this? That's question one.
Yes, I know city administration, Deputy City Administrator McCrina has been working on with Congressman Lawrence's office on submitting a request and has, you know, reached out to planning for support on public transit and pedestrian amenities. What little we had that came out of the master plan didn't, you know, really support other than the community says there's a need and we support the need, but not drilling down to specific levels. But I feel that our comprehensive review, based on priorities and based on all the other transit propensity that I outlined, is enough objective and supportive of moving forward. So any time that we can leverage funds, whether it's American Recovery Act, whether it's MDOT Transportation Enhancement Acts, whether it's leveraging through our local road projects, community development block grant, or other funding sources, we should be doing that.
And you kind of touched on another question I had too about particularly in Congresswoman Lawrence's office. I know they brought, Congress has brought back earmarks, and there are certain amount that each member of Congress gets. And you just go on their website and apply. Yeah, it's good to hear that we're working with her office on the American Rescue Plan. I'm sure that's come up as well. And putting in requests, that might be helpful for us. Also, at the state level, I will say that we, this week, were actually really starting to drill down on the budget process. And soon we will be able to make some budget requests too. So if there's any requests that the city may have, please feel free to send them my way, and I can forward them on to our legislative representatives in the state legislature.
And Councilman Hoskins, I believe previously you had reached out to us, and we've identified these large gaps, which are not inexpensive to build. As City Administrator Zorn has said, that one mile of road that's approximately 12 feet wide costs about $1 million. Well, it's a pretty close number to use also for a 10-foot-wide bike path. That's a shared-use path. It costs close to $1 million to build one linear mile with drainage and grading and asphalt and all the amenities and consultant fees and so forth. So it's not inexpensive, but we do have support from the community. And again, I'll talk a little bit about why it's important for economic development in our next presentation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum.
No, I don't have any questions. It's a very, this is very comprehensive, Terry. So kudos to you and your team and everyone that had helped. I actually had a chance to read your entire draft over the weekend. You know, they're very similar. There's things that I know that we kept pushing off and new things that we wanted to add. But again, I definitely appreciate having that five-year, six-year outlook to see what we want to try to accomplish within the city, the needs and wants and everything. So kudos to you and your team, and I look forward to trying to get as many of these done as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris.
Same here. Excellent presentation, Planner Crowe. Thank you to you and your team for all the hard work that you put in, and for there's no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. I echo, excellent presentation, Planner Crowe. Within this presentation, there are like older benches and even garbage cans within the city in different areas along bike paths that if we can't replace them, can we at least put a fresh coat of paint on them? Would they fall like within this plan?
Well, if you, if you, I'd like to answer, respond to that question after the next presentation because I believe we have a strategy to address those needs that are outside of our special assessment districts.
Okay. And then is it also possible to receive a copy of this PowerPoint? We received a copy of the the CIP report, which was excellent, but this PowerPoint presentation was also excellent, and I would love a copy. I'm sure many other council people would also love a copy of it.
We did provide a link to the Clerk's Office, and we can make sure that each of the council gets a copy of the presentation itself. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else on the call would like to comment on this presentation, Mr. Mayor, or?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I just congratulate, it's so much work to put something like this together, obviously the size of this. So to the whole planning team and Sarah in particular for managing this project. Perhaps this will be in the next presentation. But one of the things that I hear from residents who like to walk or bike is lighting, street lighting. And we have a number of places where there is either no light or the streetlights, the poles are missing. They've rusted or fallen down or been hit by cars. And I've had a number of requests about replacing streetlights. And some of them are, of course, under the control of DTE. But I just add that question.
Yes, Mayor, that has come up also in our public input regarding having better lighting for security and for other reasons. As you know, there is a special assessment district that could be established to help with some of the lighting. The city owns and maintains some lights, but most of them are through DTE. The metro funds, there's a limited percentage of the total funds that can be used towards the lighting. And if you recall, on Evergreen Road, we did dedicate at the time, a major portion of metro funds for the lighting. But there are some strings attached to that. But ultimately, yes, lighting is an important component, although a very expensive component. And a lot of the expense has to do with running the underground electrical supply to the lights. The lights themselves are anywhere for $8,000, $12,000 per pole. It's the, all the underground wiring and the power to it. But yes, that's part of our overall strategy is improving lighting after we get the infrastructure in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments for Terry regarding this presentation? City Administrator or anyone? Okay, good. Hearing none. Thank you, Terry. Again, this was a great presentation. We really appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and congratulations to all the departments and your team for the input.
Thank you.
We can go into our next presentation.
Right. So if Wendell or whoever's doing the slideshow, you can go right to the first slide of the next presentation, please. It's past slide 70. Okay. If, yeah, go back now. One more slide back. One more. I think we're trying to go should go to slide one in the cover. No, you're going too far. It's after the CIP's presentation, after 76? Go to 77, please. You can go full screen. Thank you. This is the presentation that I'm going to do now will focus on the Southfield City Center Trail as a template and a model for how we could do this citywide. And sometimes it's worth taking a step back to see where we came from and how we got there. And this is also a close version of the presentation that's going to be made at the National Planning Conference in May. But this is focusing But this is focusing on the Southfield City Center Trail, again, as a template and as, as a guide or blueprint for moving forward citywide. Next slide. Many of you know that Southfield does not have a traditional downtown. The city center was established in 1992 as a principal shopping district and the first project was renovations of Central Park Boulevard and the creation of the outdoor plaza. And the Special Assessment District was established at one cent per square foot. And I believe there was maybe less than 200,000 square feet of nonresidential at the time. Over the last 30 years, today, we have over 10 million square feet of nonresidential use, representing 1.76 square miles. However, those city center district is bisected by two major freeways that have over 280,000 cars, average daily traffic that that cut through or bisect our, our, our city center or the equivalent of what is our downtown. But this is the highest density employment center within, within the city itself. Next slide. Many of you know that Southfield was the fastest growing community in the 1960s and it was developed with a very auto dominated land use pattern. 50 years later, we still had many gaps in our sidewalk system. Even in 2010, as this map represents, all the areas in red had no sidewalks or pathways at all. So when people were trying to get from point A to point B, in many, many cases, they were walking across parking lots or or cutting through the streets or trying to navigate hostile vehicle environments to, to, to get to the library or, or City Hall or to Lawrence Tech or to many of of the retail establishments on Evergreen Road. Next slide. Then in 2009, when the Great Recession hit. If we look specifically where we were back in 2009, 2010, Evergreen Road from 10 Mile to 11 Mile, or more specifically in the, in the Civic Center campus area from Civic Center Drive to, to 11 Mile, we had six to seven lanes that were auto dominated. We had severe flooding anytime it rained and we had to put up signs. Mr. Scherratt used to put up water over road signs. We had many disconnected five foot wide sidewalks. We had little to no pedestrian amenities. We had sea of asphalt parking based on an old standard requiring buildings to be set back 75 feet and parking surrounding them. And 2010 was about the time that I came aboard. And I recall the business community recouping from the Great Recession, approaching our business development managers, Shelley Freeman and myself and said, we need help with attraction and retention of employees, specifically our young professionals who are leaving to work in more traditional downtowns that are more pedestrian friendly or are going to bigger cities. And we're having a, a problem filling our offices. I believe at the time, many of the offices were about 50% capacity or occupancy. Next slide. And, and the council recognized this. Maybe they didn't look at it specifically that way. But the council and the city administration with the plans for Evergreen Road realized that we needed to go from an auto dominated to a more pedestrian friendly and accessible community. And one of the first projects that had been on the drawing boards for over 14 years was the installation of the front lawn loop, as we affectionately call it, where three and a third times around is a mile. And that got tied into all of the improvements on Evergreen Road. So the five foot wide sidewalk that existed on Evergreen Road north of of what became the South Roundabout was expanded to 10 feet wide to encourage heart healthy activity, to encourage nature bathing or connecting for the mental health of getting outside. Was part of our master plan development of sustainable Southfield where we had economic, social, environmental sustainability. And we started using the term community collisions. I often say when you're driving by in a car going 35, 40 miles an hour, if you recognize somebody and you're lucky, you might be able to nod your head or wave. But when you're out walking, you have the opportunity to stop and engage your fellow resident or, or employee and have a conversation, introduce yourself, whether you're talking about the weather or talking about what's happening in City Hall. You have the ability to establish a relationship with your fellow resident. Also, even if you're driving, when you drive by and you see people out on the street, it tells you that the community is safe, that it's welcoming, that it's friendly, that's inclusive and it's accessible. And so for all those reasons, I believe council, city administration and others embraced that we had to do something to get out of the Great Recession and be more competitive with our, our neighboring suburban downtowns. Next slide. And this is just focusing on a before and after of the South Roundabout. But the importance was traffic calming, to be more environmentally friendly. So cars weren't stopping at a red light and exhausting carbon dioxide into the environment. The roundabouts, although at first we're, we're looking with some trepidation, reduced serious accidents of the T-bone. Decorative crosswalks were established to reinforce the pedestrian amenities. The kiosk plaza was also incorporated for wayfinding as, as another placemaking tool. Pedestrian amenities, benches, trash receptacles, all branded together were installed along this mile loop. And I, and, and art installations were included. And city administration council affectionately called this the Magnificent Mile. Next slide. And so there was, there was a focus and an immediate transformation over a two to three year period of what Evergreen Road was and what it could be and people's perception. And I recall on many people who had either worked, lived or visited Southfield who hadn't been there in a while, were really blown away by the transformation of Evergreen Road. And it was really a complete streets. It was, it was a partnership between the public and private, all the departments, city council elected officials. And it just showed you the best of what we can be and what we can become coming out of the Great Recession and coming out of 50 years of auto dominated land use development. Next slide. And things like details of creating a street edge and buffering between vehicles and pedestrians, reducing from six to seven lanes to four lanes and divided landscape median. And in, in being inclusive with pervious pavers that not only help drain water, but also provide a tactile and visual separation between vehicles and pedestrians. Next slide. Next slide, please. Also, we were trying to be innovative and using best practices with low impact design and stormwater, green infrastructure. We established a rain garden or more, more correctly, a bio retention pond that was going to filter over 33,000 cubic feet of stormwater from Evergreen Road. And it's that first inch of rain that it contains the most pollutants from oils, grease, gas and dirt that wash off the road is being filtered through this living bio retention pond before it goes into our stormwater and ultimately ends up in the Rouge River and our drinking water. Next slide. Also, it was really important. We started using terms like placemaking to create a branding identity for the city center and to provide pedestrian amenities and to signal to the public, whether they're residents, businesses or visitors, that we were going to be a pedestrian friendly community through all these elements. Even the, the small lending library that was donated by a resident of 5,000 tower and installed by the city center just shows that you're a welcoming community. And I've said that the bus shelters and public transit amenities, when, when we originally started driving through and we saw people standing in the mud and in the pouring rain, that does not tell you that you are a pedestrian friendly community. And we want to, we wanted to support that through a comprehensive, complete streets redevelopment of Evergreen Road. Next slide. And we were recognized by our peers for all the efforts, whether it was the Michigan American Society of Landscape Architects, Southfield Chamber, Michigan Concrete Association, Keep Michigan Beautiful Award or recognition in many publications, statewide and regional publications. Our peers recognized the effort that the city put in in this transformative corridor. Next slide. And we were featured in three Michigan chapter of American Society of Landscape Architects magazines. We, we received two or three featured covers and some featured stories on the redevelopment of Evergreen Road. Next slide. And based on that best practice and complete streets, we started to expand outside of this, the, the main, main street of Evergreen Road and looked at Northwestern Highway as a potential connected pathway that would tie in our transit center to our municipal campus, to Lawrence Tech University, as well as our business and retail corridor along Evergreen Road. And the photo on the left from 2010 shows, again, major gaps in our pedestrian network. And 2020, the green shows all the improvements that have been made really in the last five years. But one anecdotal lesson that we heard or story that we heard is that students would be coming to Southfield for the first time to attend Lawrence Tech University and maybe taking the Greyhound bus, getting off at the Transit Center at 11 Mile and Losser and had to try to navigate, which was really only just over about a half a mile to three quarters mile to get to campus. And there was no wayfinding. There was gaps in the system. People at Town Square would see students with backpacks and luggage trudging down these goat paths on Northwestern Highway to try to get to Lawrence Tech. Which in, in a large urban city like Chicago or Detroit or New York, there would be pathways in a half a mile to three quarters a mile. Walk from a transit or subway stop to your main destination is nothing. Next slide. This is a detailed analysis of some of the hostile environment that we had to deal with. Northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive from Civic Center, just even up to Town Square Drive. There was fragmented segments in the, in the sidewalk system. Designed speed versus actual speed on Northwestern Highway Service Drive. Many of the vehicles were traveling over 45 miles per hour. There was no curb separating from the pedestrian area. There was large gaps in, in the sidewalk system. There was overgrowth. And then you had 120,000 cars traveling on Northwestern Highway with all their, their noise and intimidation. And there was no wayfinding. How do you get from point A to point B? Am I going in the right direction? And it was not accessible to persons with disability or encouraging to the office workers who had no place to go if they wanted to get out for lunchtime other than walking in the roads or across parking lots. Next slide. And again, after concerted effort and development over a five to seven year period, the area photo on the left shows the gaps in the system. The photo on the right shows a pathway that has this first half a mile, three, anywhere from a quarter, a third of a mile to half a mile. That established the tone and the, the reference for future development throughout the city center. Next slide. And again, the, the photo on the left just typifies the unfriendly pedestrian environment that existed along this stretch. And, and the photo on the right shows the pathway. We, we started with 25 to 30 recycled telephone poles that DTE had after a snow ice storm emergency that was cheaper to, to donate than it was to relocate. And that's how, as part of a series of gateway features and outdoor rooms, Red Poll Park was established as, as a beacon for this new pathway and, and a signal to those motorists that are traveling by that there is a place that might be worth exploring. Next slide. Again, this is just another before and after photo of the existing conditions that we had. As you recall, we received a grant from Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We had a $50,000 challenge grant. If we could raise $50,000 in 60 days, we'd get an equal match. We raised over $55,000 initially with over 3,300 individual contributors or businesses. We received our $50,000 match with the donation of the poles. And then further support later on from the city center and the Southfield Council, we were able to fully develop this portion of the pathway. Next slide. As I alluded to, the, again, the city center special assessment district did not have unlimited funds. And we created a five year master plan for wayfinding and for pedestrian amenities. And how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And each year, we dedicated a certain portion of our budget for implementation, design and installation of a complete wayfinding system that also reinforced branding and pedestrian connectivity from Lawrence Tech to the Civic Center Campus, our Evergreen Road corridor and other major destinations within the district. Next slide. And here is an example of many of the various wayfinding and other trail signage that you can find out exploring. The last piece is the trail markers which have been funded. Now that we have a system, we are going to be installing wayfinding trail markers every quarter mile along the route. And I'll talk a little bit about that in greater detail. Next slide. The other thing that we created a new space to, to, to allow for the community to have special events or to take as an individual a walk. We've had the Crohn's and Colitis Walk. This will be year four, going on year five, although it's kind of took a pause and went to a virtual event last year and there's a hybrid event this year. But over between 800 and 1,200 people are now coming to our community on an annual basis from all over the region, as far as Toledo and, and major parts of Southeast Michigan to walk two and a half miles along this pathway and to walk through Red Poll Park. We have snowshoes showing in the upper right hand corner on, on a beautiful sunny but cold winter day. And we have individual residents as well as employees taking advantage of this connected system on a daily basis. Next slide. And one of the remaining gaps is the southbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive. We are currently working on easement agreements. But I, I, I might have skipped ahead here. The next section after Red Poll Park was developed was a partnership with Lawrence Tech University, the city of Southfield and MDOT for Transportation Enhancement Funds, where we leveraged several hundred thousand dollars between the three entities and received close to a million dollars of funding to, to build this three fifth of a mile from Civic Center Drive down to 10 Mile. And right around 2010, Lawrence Tech also, Lawrence Technology University, though, would correct me, also recognized that as a traditional commuter commuter school, they they didn't have any problem attracting students in the engineering architectural academics. They were having a problem retaining them because students now want a full university experience, including residential living and and student athlete opportunities. And here again, is Lawrence Tech, I think, first purchased the property in the 1950s and and later developed. Here's another 50, 60 years where they had no pedestrian connectivity to the main areas of the city center or along their Northwestern Highway. And they have made a steady improvement. They now have over 1,000 residential dorm units on campus. They have over 16 sports programs. And as you know, we have a very good town and gown relationship with the university. Next slide. And through this work, we again got recognized through Michigan Chapter of American Society of Landscape Architects. There's a construction photo on the left and the after photo, taking advantage of some of the existing vegetation to to build this this pathway connection that the university is already bending from with their student athletes. And then eventually, when when sports come back, there are visitors who can park in the north parking lot, walk down to the athletic facilities. They're going to have their first on campus commencement at the university this year. And this does provide another segue connection to the city center and and spending money in the community. Next slide. And this is has been evident if you go out there on on a nice day with not only students and athletes using, but I I notice a lot of faculty, employees, as well as residents who have taken advantage of this new section of pathway. Next slide. We've made concerted effort. I'm very proud that we have now 11 bike share stations in our city center. And we have built the amenities to support the bike share station. Fifty percent of all use of our bike share program comes from Lawrence Tech students. And when we look at a heat map, students are biking as far as Telegraph and 12 Mile, Southfield and 12 Mile, and other areas in the city when they're utilizing their bikes. So they're spending their money and they're getting exposed to all the wonderful assets that the the city has through this both pathway network as well as the bike share program. Next slide. Placemaking also includes the installation of art. Council loaned the Southfield Public Arts Commission funding for the purchase of Northland Art and then has been paid back with the donations that have been raised. But as part of the first installations of Boy and Bear and other Southfield pieces of art, we've had three local artists or owners of of art that are featured here donate as well their own pieces of art with the city center and city providing in kind services for the installation of these arts. And we went from the purchasing of Northland Art to donated art to the public art requirement, which raises funds or requires installation of private art for projects of a million dollars or greater, to now with Hubert Massey, we have two commissioned pieces that are fully funded and will be installed later this year when it's COVID safe. So we've come a long way from 2014 through 2016 when we were just getting established with the support of the city council. Next slide. One of the other things that the city center has done is to create placemaking through whimsical installation of approximately 15 birdhouses in cooperation with private and public entities, as well as we have five additional birdhouses and bat houses that are going to be installed along the trail. This gives an opportunity for selfies, for photos on Instagram, for geocaching, or just a pleasant surprise as you're walking along the trail to find one of these unique birdhouses that helps to identify and separate Southfield from other communities. Next slide. Another important long term effect of building pathways is creating ownership. And through our interpretive panels, they provide understanding, they provide appreciation, and eventually stewardship over the pathway and and the public realm themselves. And these are examples of various interpretive panels, whether they be historic, whether they be art focused, or whether they be environmentally focused, that have been installed along Evergreen Road and Northwestern Highway with more to come. Next slide. And I'm really proud that after years of segmented and and gaps in our system, that we have tied those all together with preexisting trails and sidewalks to our future development. And we can now proudly say that we have over 7.75 linear miles of connected trail that are eight feet wide or greater that promote biking and shared use along these trails and that have been fully implemented with the pedestrian amenities, with bike amenities, with signage and with art. And this is an example of the fourth edition of our brochure that highlights significant public buildings. Can we go to the next slide, please? Because the reverse side of this brochure. And we update this on a semi annual to yearly basis. We we've identified major art installations of public. We've identified special events, historic Lawrence Tech, as well as the city campus. We've identified hotels, restaurants, major restaurants and retail centers, special annual events and and programming along the the city center trail. And just in the last week, we went live with Pocket Sites, which is a virtual tour of 25 destinations along a two and a half mile loop within the city center that you can look at virtually, or if you're out walking on a nice sunny day, the the tour will guide you to all the destinations with a background information and a photo of of each of the 25 stops. And as you know, when young professionals are looking to either relocate for work, residence or schooling, they're going to go online and they're going to they're going to check out the community. And the more social media and avenues that we have of of why Southfield is a positive place to live, work and recreate, the better chances we have of bringing those those young professionals and others into our community. Next slide. And then there's many reasons why people choose to make major investments in a particular community or in a particular area of the city. But again, we can proudly say that when the pathway was first established between Civic Center and Corporate Drive, there was a lot of fallow and vacant land that had been there for decades. And we now have four major developments either completed or under construction right in that corridor. And I I like to believe that part of it is the effort that the city has taken on and the location of the freeways, the corporate business culture and Lawrence Tech. But also, they see this as an amenity for their employees and their guests being located adjacent to where you can just walk out and walk or ride a bike on our pathway system. Next slide. And then finally, I alluded to, there's one half mile stretch of the entire 1.75 linear miles that is still missing any type of pedestrian connectivity and has goat paths or open ditches. And we're working closely with Eaton Corp, the church and 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 the the gas station to secure easements for consideration of of funding this last segment of unconnected pathway within the city center. And after seven years of deliberate effort, the entire city center will be connected when this portion is completed. Next slide. And again, I'm going to go back to the major remaining gaps in the system and ask the council to consider utilizing Metro Fund Acts that are already in the bank to help fund these other gaps in their system, to use the money as matching funds for potential grants, to leverage any road projects that the city is undertaking to make these pedestrian improvements, and to also look at special assessment districts for funding of lighting and other other amenities. And as I said, this is not just a pipe dream of the planning department or economic development. But as as alluded to, it helps us be more age friendly community. It helps with accessibility. It helps with our goals of diversity, inclusion and equity. It's supported in the master plan. The previous master plan from five years ago, one of the three top priorities was more pedestrian improvements. And it's supported in our current master plan public input as is what the community wants. Next slide. Again, just just to re emphasize, we are being recognized by our peers for the work that we've done to date, that we've received positive publicity on many magazines and articles nationwide, if you excuse, at least statewide. And if you follow Instagram, I'm I'm pleasantly surprised at how many times people are are now posting selfies or other images along the pathway with I I driven by this project on M10 Lodge for for many months, didn't know what it was and was pleasantly surprised when I I stopped that there's actually a bike path and pathway there. And I spent a nice Saturday or Sunday afternoon exploring, or or people just take selfies of 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 various events throughout the seasons at at these destinations and gateways. Next slide. So I'm just going to make one last closing remarks, just to kind of tie everything together. Again, this is part of my presentation at the National Planning Conference. And if you just indulge me for two more minutes, I'll wrap up my presentation. Much like a lighthouse signals landfall to traveling vessels, Red Poll Park serves as a modern beacon along the trail. The photo shows blue solar powered marine navigation lights that come on every night and blink like fireflies. The Southfield City Center Trail is a new urban greenway that brings community desired walkability to a suburb once hostile to any form of transportation other than the personally owned vehicle. Situated along a major urban freeway, the trail is now a welcoming venue for heart healthy activity and provides opportunities for human to human and human to nature interactions. Forming the backbone for additional trail development, the Southfield City Center Trail has spurred economic development and promotes civic engagement through community building events in a space where people feel safe and welcome. Carved away from years of suburban indifference towards the needs of pedestrians, this trail provides space and access for diverse individuals to connect and collaborate. Much like a river ebbs and flows, providing life to all in its path, the City Center Greenway Trail is a primary channel from which other tributaries have sprouted to provide healthy outdoor access that was missing from this urban environment. By taking a 10 minute walk, individuals in 10 million square feet of office and high density mixed use space can reap the physical and mental benefits of nature bathing, a form of ecotherapy that can reduce stress, increase attention and enhance creativity. The Greenway Trail provides more than 30,000 office workers, residents and students and visitors the chance to engage with nature year round on accessible half mile loop paths that wind through outdoor rooms. Benches placed with intention to provide accessible respite stations, enhance social equity and encourage pedestrians of all abilities. Strategically placed benches signal a welcoming atmosphere. And according to a 2017 survey by the Center for Active Design, can even help build public trust, increase public satisfaction and encourage public participation. Users of the trail can educate themselves about the value of urban wildlife and plant amenities and environmental sustainability through interpretive panels placed along the route, a resource that enhances knowledge and therefore stewardship of outdoor resources. Encouraging You Can signage provides positive messaging for people on the trail. It is within the public realm that we can have the greatest impact on daily lives where people of all abilities, incomes and backgrounds can meet, gather and enjoy the out of doors. In closing, the City Center Trail System with its wide shared use pathways, coordinated benches and trash receptacles, attractive and accessible wayfinding, bicycle fixing stations, art, whimsical birdhouses, interpretive panels, and numerous other pedestrian amenities has transformed a largely vehicle centered corridor into a safe and welcoming place for non motorized traffic. Thank you. And on behalf to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Terry. And again, this is another great presentation. I will start with Council, Councilman Cruz. Okay, we'll come back. Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you. And again, again, very good presentation. Now I will talk about the citywide, citywide bike trail. What what's your vision for that?
Well, again, Councilman Hoskins, this, if you looked at seven years ago, we could not call this a trail system. But through a concerted effort, deliberate effort with funding from various sources, we've built a 7.7 mile trail system. And I'd like to take this quote unquote on the road and look at those gaps of our existing system throughout the city and continue to expand on this trail. This trail now goes all the way down to Nine Mile Road along Northwestern Highway. And eventually, I'd like to see this trail connect into the perimeter one and a half mile pathway that's envisioned and planned for Northland Center. There's other areas of the city that we have large stretches of wooded areas with very few curb cuts. Nine Mile and Evergreen Road is an example that connect directly into communities that otherwise would not have the ability to tie into the system. The Rouge River Corridor from 10 to 12 Mile would be another high priority for making an investment. And there's other areas of commercial and high density nodes that we see large gaps in our system that we just need to have a dedicated funding source and the will to to build this. And I believe in five to 10 years, we could have a citywide system built upon the success that we've had at the city center.
Okay.
And we're going to use the master plan also as as a guide and support for where in the community that the residents would like to see this developed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum.
Terry, again, you and your team did a great presentation on all these pathways and trails. And, you know, it is nice to see when people are walking through the city center and and whatnot. I'm definitely a big proponent of those and especially sidewalks and streetlights in neighborhoods as well. But kudos to you and your team. And let's keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. And thank you again, Planet Crow, to you and your team for a very informative presentation, especially from a historical perspective. I enjoyed it and I really appreciate all the work your department is doing and and how you're being recognized. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have no further comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks.
I echo everything.
I echo everything that my colleagues have said. And I'm also in favor of expanding the trails, improving the gaps, and also hopefully reviewing the existing bike paths and improving on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, excellent. I appreciate this too. I'm glad to see that we are putting some urban amenities for our permanent residents, our student residents, and so our daytime residents. So this is a good, if nothing else, talking point, but it also really serves the individuals who utilize our city and live in our city. So this is a good vision. I appreciate it. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
And Councilman Cruz? Okay. Well, thank you, Terry. And I guess this, we were just being presented this tonight for information and a consensus for which I think you've gotten from all of us, to move forward with the pedestrian amenities, the streetlights and bike paths and all those wonderful things that you've presented here tonight. Is there anything else you needed from us tonight, Terry?
Well, I just wanted to say that we've requested through the capital improvement program and in the budget to dedicate a significant amount of the Metro Funds for Year One to get this thing jump-started, which is, you know, as you know, fiscal year begins July 1. Well, by the time we get engineering and planning done, nothing's really going to be probably built till next year. What I did want to ask the council to consider, not necessarily tonight, it could be done at the next meeting, is consider allocating $100,000 in this current fiscal year budget to at least start with some of the benches, trash receptacles, and key of public transit improvements that we can, we strongly believe that we can get implemented by the end of the summer, early fall. So that is the one ask. I know the city administrator, maybe the finance director is on, but we have the long-term plans that are proposed in the capital improvement plan, and then ultimately the budget that the council will be considering. But we are asking you to consider at least giving us a jumpstart of approximately $100,000 that we can start implementing citywide these requests that we've received from council and others for bench installation, trash can installation, and some key walks at public transit stops.
Okay. Yes, and Fred and/or Austin, could you present something to council to vote on here in the near future?
Yes, Madam President. This is Administrator Zorn.
Okay.
Planner Crowe and I had discussed April 26. Just by way of information, at June 30 of last year, we had $1,389,280. And we'll probably make a request for $100,000 this fiscal year. And then in next year's budget, there is an additional amount that we'll move, present as part of the budget presentation in June.
Okay, thank you. That'd be great. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak about this presentation tonight? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Terry.
Thank you for taking the time to listen, but I think this is something we all should be proud of, and it really is a blueprint of how we can get this done citywide. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We have no appointments. Councilman Mandelbaum, did you want to make a comment or?
Yes, if you don't mind, to anyone who is listening or watching, we have several vacancies on some of our boards and commissions. I won't go through them all now, but you can go to the city's website under the City Clerk's webpage, and there's a listing of all our boards and commissions, and you can see where we have vacancies. And there's also applications you can apply online. We are working on setting up a meeting the next couple of weeks to do some interviews for appointments. So if you do see something that you are interested in, feel free to go to the website, reach out to the City Clerk's office. You can send me an email or a call, and I can talk to you about those as well. But we are more than happy to look for some new blood in the helping volunteer in the city on boards and commissions. So thank you in advance to anyone who does apply.
Thank you. Next, we have two sets of minutes to approve, council.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the special meeting minutes of March 11, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of March 22, 2021.
Support, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the special meeting minutes of March 11, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of March 22, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Minutes approved. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. And first? Yes.
Oh, go ahead. Good. I will interject. Go ahead. I think you were getting me to address something. Go ahead.
Okay. There's a couple of things I'd like to say before we move to the consent agenda. One is, on the first item where we're scheduling the public hearing for the single-lot assessment, we will hear more information and updates on that single-lot special assessment roll from our city assessor under the assessor portion. Mike Rightcliff will give us an update there. We're just approving the date for the public hearing at this time on the consent agenda, which will be April 26. The other item is Item D. You received an amendment to this item. It was just a gentleman's agreement between administration and the developer where they supposed to, they changed the 18 months to the 24 months for the completion of the homes on the single, on those sale of the real property on those several parcels. And the last item, Item H, if you remember, I had some questions regarding the management. Actually, it was on the city administrator and the city attorney, but upon review of their contracts, they are in agreement with, we are in agreement with their contracts. So this item is perfectly fine, and that's why it was left on the agenda. So council, now for the consent agenda, we're seeking approval for Items A through H.
Madam President, I'd like to approve of those. I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, for the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull Item D for a little further discussion.
Okay.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
I'd also like to pull Item H. I have a few additions and corrections to that.
Okay. So can, Councilman Cruz, can we amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have the, first, I got to get a second. Councilman Cruz is...
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I support that motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been motion by Councilman Cruz, a second by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, and G. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay. Now for Item D, proposed sale of real property, several parcels. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, this is, it caught me by surprise when I was reading through it that what we had agreed on was changed from 18 months to 24 months. And I don't, I don't mind changes, but this is, this is the first I saw that when I saw this document, it was a request of approval, where we sent it forward at the last, at the last meeting with 18 months. I just wanted to get a, I don't like the, I shouldn't be blindsided. Like, if I hadn't read it, would never have known that things had changed. But that's on, and I was just point-blank on the, on the cover of nature of that. That should not happen. If we approve something one week and it comes back differently next week without a significant notice, and I have not seen a notice.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn, if I may comment. If you'll recall during the presentation, the developer had indicated that 18 months from the date that he receives approval from the building department. That, the process within the building department on submittals, empty lots and that, that's a process pretty much driven by the quality of the submittal. And the difficulties in having agreement that where the administration would have to wait and monitor on five different properties when they get their various approvals. And there could be utility issues, there could be engineering issues, there could be tree issues, water storm issues. Now, in addition to having a house approved, it was administratively meant that 24 months instead of 18. The original agreement, you were correct, Councilman Brightwell, did say 18 months, but during that conversation, the developer said from the point of approval. And the logistics on that are just a real challenge for us. And 24 months. Then I want to point out the things that people are experiencing in building homes from window delays to trucks is taking much longer. The construction industry is in a bit of a turmoil right now. So, you know, the administration did agree. You know, originally, we had 18 months. When the developer proposed that, when we sat down trying to figure out how to make that work out, we came up with 24 months. And that will be memorialized by, within the agreement, in its final form, to be approved by the city attorney.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. And I do realize that life gets in the way of things that we want to do, and plans change. Things change, circumstances change. But me to find out about this as I was going through this particular document. I'm a habitual reader, so I read stuff. If I was not a habitual reader, I would not have known this without someone else bringing it to our attention. And I realize the council are rational people, like, you know, common sense people. And if things come to us that make sense, like you just said, makes sense. And we should have gotten some type of high-level notice. This is being amended. And because, quite frankly, when I approve something, I assume what I approve will come back to me in the exact form that I approved. It's just, I never operate like that, so that's not a good way of operating. So, but I don't mind teaching this, but let's just, you know, I will, this is just a rational thing I can say. If anything changes that we approve that I vote on in the future and on a council, please let us know at a very high level, and as soon as possible. It's not exactly what you approved last time. This is what it is now. And some kind of way administratively, we can make an amendment, say, council, or whatever is the Robert's Rule Amendment way of saying, this has changed over that time. So I don't have a problem with it. I can understand, like I said, life gets in the way. Things change, and in particular, where council, this is not a shortstop. It's just an administrative process that I've been on council long enough to realize things, some kind do not happen, approved, and they, they get literally messed up. But this is not one of those. But that's all that, that's about it. So we'll go forward with this, but more of an administrative thing.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell. Duly noted, and in the future, we'll get the information to you as soon as possible. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next item is Item H. Review and approve wage and benefits for bargaining unit employees, management, and ACS employees. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I see a conflict between the actual letter and the resolution, and I would just like to point them out in the letter and see if we could please have the letter corrected for the record. For number two, under recommendation, it says across-the-board increase, January 1, 2021. Is that supposed to be 2% or 3%?
Is James on the line?
Yes, Madam President. That is 3%.
Okay, so number two for 2021 and 2022 is 3%?
Yes, Councilwoman.
James, you need to tie that back to the bargaining group. I think part of it is just how this was presented in the recommendation. It is different than the resolution. The 2%, the 3% does not apply to the civil service and the management employees. Am I correct with that statement?
It does not, but Item Five says that.
Right.
Okay, well, maybe Item Two and Item Five should be together, but we can leave it at that. That's okay. Number six, I think, needs to be clarified. It says management wage increase will also apply to contract positions of city administrator, city attorney, and I think it should also say city planner. Our city planner is also a contract person. And it says for the year 2021. And I think we need to add "and" 2022 so that down the road, there is no confusion. 2022 needs to be added, and also city planner.
Through the chair?
Yes.
It was updated.
It's not updated in my packet. My letter does not, my letter says through 2021.
Then I apologize. We did update the letter.
Okay.
And we did.
Yeah, so just so that we have the correct letter in the supporting documentation, so several years down the road, if we're looking at this item again, there will be no questions. I believe the resolution, if I'm reading it correctly, it does state that the city administrator, city attorney, and the city planner will receive an increase for the year of 2021 and 2022. But it doesn't really state that in the body of the letter. Thank you.
Through the chair, we will update the bodies.
Okay, thank you.
And resubmit to council?
Well, and also to the clerk's office for the record.
Yes, thank you. Any other conversation on those two items? Okay. Councilman, I have a motion.
Well, Chair, this is Brightwell. I motion that we approve of D and H as presented, or as amended.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks for the approval of Item D and approval of item D and H as amended. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
We have no public hearings tonight, no site plans. And next we have under uh our communications, but first I'd like to uh read that the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. Rule seven, number seven of the rules of procedure for the Southfield City Council reads, "No speaker may make personal or impertinent acts upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If not, your microphone will be muted." Thank you. Now we will open up for communications. Madam President, I just opened up the line for communication. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, Four Eight Zero Three Seven. Tonight, I wish, Madam President, to talk about Section eleven point five, eleven point five in the Southfield City Charter. Eleven point five is entitled Vacancy Defined, which describes councils' two ways that can be used to fill vacancies for elected offices here in the city of Southfield. It appears that this council will soon have a vacancy to fill. When this occurs, council's first step is to fill the vacancy within a temporary appointment within sixty days. And if council fails to make this appointment, step number two kicks in, and then council must call a special election. I believe a special election during COVID nineteen is not a very good idea. Instead, I'd like to suggest a modified choice. Let me explain. In this case, council would fill the vacancy with the number one runner-up in the last council election. That is the council candidate who placed fifth in the twenty nineteen election. In this case, Donald Ficassi, Mr. Southfield. In this way, the voters and not the politicians will determine who will fill the vacancy. I first mentioned this concept six and a half years ago, and apparently the then council agreed with me when they replaced Jeremy Moss in twenty fourteen with Lloyd Cruz, who was the number one runner-up in twenty thirteen. And then a few months later, council replaced Ken Seiver with Michael Mandelbaum, the number two runner-up in twenty thirteen. And then in twenty seventeen, council replaced Joan Seymour with Lenny Taylor, the number one runner-up in twenty fifteen. I hope that this council continues with this policy this year and hopefully in future years. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
Yes, yes.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
I'm doing pretty good.
Good.
Uh, again, I just want to thank the residents that are calling me to offer their condolences for my mom. Um, it's a day-to-day thing, uh, and I do appreciate it. And you know who just sent me a plant, so I'm saying thank you to you as well. You know, I'm listening to you, uh, Madam President, and this is Pamela Gerald, and I've been around for a very long time. And I don't know what to think about this statement that you just made in reference to freedom of speech or what uh residents want to say and under communications. We are allowed to say whatever it is that we want. I kind of got the feeling that you're referring to me based on what I said at the last council meeting. So let me remind all of you what we had to endure when Lloyd Cruz was the president for a year and also Dan Brightwell. The people watching at home and the people in the audience had to listen to Keith Harris and Toby Rhodes totally, totally disrespect Councilman Michael Mandelbaum and Mayor Kinson Seiver, along with our former forty-sixth District Court Judge, Bill Richard. In addition, we had to listen to Toby Rhodes and Keith Harris talk about our esteemed police department. So I don't want to get the feeling, Madam President, that there's some gender bias going on because you did allow those two people to be disrespectful. What I said was not a personal attack, and it wasn't an attack on his character. Campaign finance reports are very public. If you don't want someone like me looking, speaking my truth and my piece, and asking the question, "Is it unethical but not illegal?", then you shouldn't do it. We do not have a pay-to-play system like in some other highly populated areas. I'm not going to allow anyone on this council to stop me from saying what I want to say when your campaign finance report is public. Now, if you don't want someone like me talking about it because I look at all of your campaign finance reports, and the best report I've ever seen is Nancy Banks, and then Michael Mandelbaum, and then Ken Seiver. So if you don't want me to see it and say something, do it right. Stop with the unethical donations that you solicit for your vote.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Yes, uh, my name is Patrice Taylor. I live in the John Grace Community area. And um within the last year, I have had to place various and numerous complaints to code enforcement regarding the East Street business noise and not following the ordinances. A reformer group is the biggest violator. They actually are a business that's on East Street, and they have two businesses. They have a business at Two Zero Seven Seven One East Street and Two Zero Nine Four One East Street. And the Two Zero Nine Seven Four One East Street is in V Labs. They're both owned by the same individual. And this has been going off approximately a year. I have been complaining, I have been calling code enforcement, um, Mr. Shishka's been going out, I have been interacting with Ms. Beeks back and forth, and it's all been documented, back and forth with this noise constantly. I don't know if they've actually been ticketed, but we've either requested it and several other individuals with on within my block, Delaware Street, have been requesting that they that they be ticketed as well. Well, now, Great Lakes Authority is over there, and they have this wonderful grand major construction project going on. And with this project, they have this noise that's unbearable. And with this noise comes now the ground is shaking. And today, I had to to send each and every one of you all, and I hope you all received this email. I hope you did not take personal offense to it, but I had to send it to you because now it's affecting my health because this noise is unbearable. It sounds as if though they are pounding into the ground, and I don't know what else to do. You all are supposed to be our assistants. I don't know who else to speak to. I have spoken to everyone, I have contacted the state. We the everyone refers you to everyone else. I've sent an email to all of you all, I've sent an email to the mayor. I have received an email from Ms. Banks, who always responds. She's always the one who responds. No one else on the city council responds to me as a resident but Ms. Banks and Mayor Seiver. That's it. No one else does. So I would appreciate if someone can tell me after speaking to planning and development, the building department, and everyone else who's in the um city administration, this can someone help us? Because Delaware Street is going through a lot with all of these zoning. That is a light, that zone is light industrial. And I'm trying to understand why you all, city council, continue to give East Street these rezoning special circumstances. We are a community. We would like.
Um, thank you, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We your your three minutes is up. Um, but we are aware, we are aware and have seen many of the communications, and I know that administration is working with code enforcement on this particular issue. Um, we can have someone update you as to the progress of what's going on currently, but uh as recently as uh earlier today, we did speak about it with uh administration. So we are all fully aware uh of what's going on, and we are sorry that you have to experience this.
Um, Madam President, may I just add a word here?
Yes, please.
Uh, I did respond to Ms. Taylor um uh this afternoon. I will be looking in tomorrow about the um vibrations uh and the noise, what is what is taking place there, to refresh everybody that's on the call, is the replacement of the water reservoirs for the Great Lakes Water Authority. This is a proactive move on on the part of the uh Water Authority. Uh, the existing reservoirs that have been there for a very, very long time are aging out, and rather than wait till they fail, uh, the Great Lakes of uh Water Authority is replacing these tanks. Uh, the work that's going on right now, um, I was over there the other day um on another matter uh regarding reformer group. The uh I did look at what's taken place on the uh east side of East Street, and um they are working on uh the foundation and the leveling of this property, uh, I believe, but I will confirm and let um uh Patrice know that um uh this should be, once they get the the foundation done, things should quiet down uh over there as um the tanks uh that they're building are mostly above ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there someone else on the call for communications? Madam President, we do have one more person. Okay.
Hello, Council, hello, Madam President, this is Luther Hardnett. Um, address is Two Seven Three Two Four Evergreen Road, uh, right here in Lakefront Village. Um, I've been listening in on the uh meeting today, and I was just a little somewhat confused, and if you guys could answer the questions for me. Um, is it to my understanding that the um parcel sales, uh, me which I believe was Agenda C or Consent C, and the developers were Consent, I believe, D, um, are these approved, or is this still a motion that has to be made to be approved for those sales?
They are approved.
All right. Um, the other question I wanted to ask was, does that twenty-four month process that uh Councilman Brightwell was talking about, is that a process that is only for the um developers?
In that that was a particular, that was a particular situation in that with those developers, they wanted from um um the time, I can't remember the 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 time that they were saying, we were just trying to clarify that and make sure that we could get it, have the right understanding, it's from the point of point of something, I can't remember the word right now, um, that they were that they were talking about. So can um city administrator, if you want to jump in and help me here?
The part of it with on item D was that there are five properties, and during our uh study session, the developer stated he wanted the eighteen months to start from point of approval of 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 the bill of his building uh and issuance of of his building permit. And with five properties, that's just too difficult, and the compromise we came up in discussion late last week was the twenty-four months. And on most of these other deals, you know, we try to, you know, do eighteen months, and you know, I will tell you, monitoring the eighteen months can can be a challenge, and uh we tend, you know, we work with people, but you know, the point is, we're we're selling these properties at more than fair prices, and our objective is to get a property built on them. So, you know, in the in the case with the five properties, um, you know, we we did twenty-four months, and uh, sir, your your approval was the eighteen months as as we discussed.
Okay, now, is this the eighteen months from approval of permit or eighteen months from approval of sale? Because uh.
So it's approval of purch- it's approval of purchase, because the approval of build, that's the number that's almost impossible for us to know when it's starting. That process is usually driven by the the builders.
Madam President, I think the three minutes is up. Uh, if there's some questions, I I if it pleases the chair to send them to the clerk's office, so we can respond uh later.
Thank you, yes, that would be fine. Um, or we can have someone reach out to you, Mr. Hardnett, if you want to s- send your information to the clerk, and we can have someone reach out to you for your questions, or you can send your questions directly to the clerk, and we can have them answered.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, we don't, we do not have anyone else for uh communication this evening. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, now we're at the council portion, and council will um start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Um, I just want to remind everyone to please remember to continue to wear your mask, please continue to social distance, please continue to wash your hands, and um, you know, for the next few weeks, if we could just all just crack down, you know, stay home, let's see if we can get these numbers down, not only in the state of Michigan, but also in um our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I have a couple items uh related to veterans, and as I've always stated that perhaps a veteran might not be listening in, but I hope that hopefully the individuals who are listening in, if you are a veteran, relate this message to them, you know, relate the messages to them, because the VA is doing quite a bit for veterans. In this particular case, um, as of March, March twenty-four, through the Saves Lives, Save Lives Act. In this particular case, as of March, March 24, through the Save Lives, Save Lives Act, the VA is vaccinating all veterans, their spouses and caregivers. I'll repeat that, until March 24. The VA is vaccinating all veterans, their spouses and caregivers to take advantage of this particular item. Please connect if you're a primary caregiver at the VA, whoever you are, who is your primary care doctor there, and you can arrange to get vaccinated with your spouse and caregiver. The other item is that our local Veterans Commission, Southfield Veterans Commission, which I chaired for 10 years, which I very good 10 years, I enjoyed the volunteer and assignment. The Veterans Commission, on May 15, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., they will be giving food boxes and also information that is with the community for information purposes for veterans. The location will be the South Public Library, the the roundabout or the Circle Drive at the Southfield Public Library on May 15, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And also the first 100 individuals receive a $25 Meyer gift card. That's May 25, 15, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. To register for that, please call 248-796-4838. That is 248-796-4vet, V E T, that's 4838. So those are two significant items that are very beneficial to veterans and or their families and caregivers during this particular time of COVID and this time of hardship. But like I reiterated, every time I mention these notes, the individuals who are listening in, please pass information on to people that you know might be a veteran. This info, this info can be very beneficial to them and their families. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple short things. I did want to respond to Ms. Taylor who called in during the communications portion about the response from council people. And I just wanted to kind of let people know that, you know, there's seven of us that have a vote and on on types of things. And when we get emails that are sent to all of us, we don't like to send everybody an email back. Someone has responded and and we've seen that it has been addressed, we kind of go in that direction. We're a team. And so I don't want, I don't want her or anyone else to think that the council is not being responsive because we all, we get the emails or calls and then we do respond. Also, as related to Mr. Mullen, who called in about the policy on replacing council members, well, there's not really a policy, there's a practice. So and I and I have been, as he stated, part of that practice, but it doesn't mean that that's the way that we have to do it every time. So if for whatever reason, there is a vacancy and we have to make a decision, it's up to us to do that. That's why we are have been selected to be in a position of leadership. Lastly, I just want to thank Mayor Cybert for calling for a state of emergency here in the city as it relates to us meeting, more particularly, meeting in person right now. I don't think that everybody is comfortable with it right now. I don't know that everybody has been vaccinated, all those types of things. And I think we need to give it a little more time. I think we've seen in the state of Michigan that the numbers continue to rise. And I think it's, I think it was a very prudent decision for him to do that. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And so the and so that everyone understands why we're still doing this via a remote process as opposed to meeting back in person right now. The states are doing their thing, but Michigan has to do their own thing. And so thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I'll just keep mine brief. As has been mentioned by my colleagues, the cases of COVID-19 are skyrocketing here in Michigan. We have to make sure we do we do our parts to stop the spread of COVID. You can, of course, always, the resource is always available to you is the city, you can go to our website, the setup for finding finding a vaccine to get tested, cityofsouthfield.com/covid19vaccine. Or you can always give give us a call at 248-796-44529. And someone can help you get a find an appointment for a vaccine. At this moment, everyone is eligible. Everyone who is eligible to get a vaccine can get an appointment, can get an appointment for it. So please take advantage of it and use the resources that we have available for you to get that vaccine and and stop the spread. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I I wanted to reiterate something that Councilman Cruz said, that, you know, as council people, we get a lot of emails and we do look to see if there has been a response. And in case of Ms. Taylor today, we know, I did see that the mayor responded shortly after the email was sent. So I didn't feel that there was a a need to respond and clog up all the emails. So, you know, if she thought that at least I or my other colleagues were ignoring her, I apologize, but we try to, as Councilman Cruz said, be a team. And we usually have one person respond when we're all copied on the email. The other thing that I wanted to do was just give a quick shout out to our Southfield Police Department dispatchers. This week is National Telecommunications Week and the city of Southfield has dispatchers and we are dead, we are, our chief today started honoring them and recognizing for their dedication and their hard work because dispatchers are first responders as well. There's a lot that they do to help the citizens of Southfield and Lethard Village. And we are grateful to them and thank them for all of their hard work. So thank you very much. Other than that, please, everyone, continue to be diligent and stay safe and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate you reading the council's rules of procedures prior to the start of communication. I want to say that I was on a virtual Democratic Party meeting call this past weekend and former resident of Southfield Pamela Gerald accused me of participating in pay to play politics because I received a donation from the owner of Sapphire Apartments, owner Mr. Sean Stafford. And and yes, to be transparent, the committee to elect Tanya Morris didn't receive two donations from Mr. Stafford. One was in 2017 for $500 and that was prior to the building issues that occurred at Sapphire. And I'm not even sure if he owned the property at that time, but the other donation was in 2019 for $250. And so even as an elected official, there are laws to protect one from unfounded base of slander. And your libel claims, Mrs. Gerald, are an attempt to defame my character. As a leader on this council for the past six years, I have shown that I have my own voice, my own conscience, and I will stand up for what I believe in. I do not or will ever engage in pay to play politics. And Mrs. Gerald's continuous slander, her intellectual deception and harassment of members of this council, it just must come to an end. Mrs. Gerald, you will not continue to misrepresent facts in an attempt to sully my character and you are being put on notice this evening. You will receive a cease and desist letter from my attorney. And if you're still on the call, if you could provide me with your real Farmington area address, I would appreciate it. Thank you and have a good night, everyone.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask everyone to stay safe and you'll be getting more information from the mayor and city administrator on that are happening around the COVID vaccine here in the city of Southfield. But I just wanted to mention an event that will be happening on Thursday, April 15, with the Empowerment Church is in partnership with Henry Ford Health Systems to give the vaccine to anyone 18 and older. And it would be held at 24300 Southfield Road, Suite 101. You do need to register. You would register at empowermentmi.org/vaccine. This will be on Thursday, April 15, from 9:30 to 3:30. Again, stay safe. We have the highest numbers here in the state of Michigan than anywhere at this time. And so they're asking us not to forget to remain vigilant in wearing our masks, washing our hands and social distancing. We are not out of the woods yet. So it's important to continue to be tested and to receive the vaccine. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again, Council. I want to pick up where Madam Chair, you left off. I hate to bring up these statistics, but as you say, we're not out of the woods. In January, Southfield had 276 new cases of COVID-19. In February, it dropped to 144 cases. In March, it skyrocketed to 538 new cases. And we are on track right now on the 12th day of April to exceed March's number of cases. We are, we are at 339 new cases of COVID in the city of Southfield since April 1st. So this is very real and we understand from state data that many of the new cases are teenagers and younger people under age 39. I want to mention that Surgeons Choice, the outpatient or specialty surgery center next to Providence Hospital on Foster Winter Drive is doing vaccinations on Wednesdays and this Saturday. They will be doing about 200 on Wednesday and I think 500 next Saturday, the 17th. To sign up, you go to surgeonschoice.com and it's right on their website. Again, that's surgeonschoice.com. Ascension, Michigan will be setting up in the Southfield Pavilion. There's been a slight delay. We were scheduled to start on Friday this week, but that's been pushed back due to staffing issues with the hospital or the health system. But we are in continual contact, I've heard from the president of Ascension, Michigan this afternoon. The other, the other thing that's COVID related that I want to mention is sadly, we have lost 267 Southfielders in the past 13 months due to COVID-19. The city will be holding a memorial to honor the memory of the people who lost their lives to COVID-19. We will have a memorial flag display on the front lawn from the 10th of May to the 28th. And we will have a candlelight vigil, reading the names of those who succumbed in the pandemic at 8 p.m. on Tuesday, May 11. Everyone is invited. If you've lost a relative, a friend, a neighbor, a colleague that has a tie to Southfield, you are welcome to register this person's name, a brief bio and a photograph is available online with the Community Relations Department. The person to contact, or the email rather, is kbriant, B R Y A N T, kbriant@cityofsouthfield.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Administrator?
Madam President, thank you, Honorable Counsel. Most of the items on my list have been checked off. I would like to let council and the community know that based on the numbers we're seeing, we've made the decision to keep City Hall open virtually until May 3. Most of business that needs to be completed can be accomplished, you know, via the internet or if you need to meet with staff in person, to call City Hall and we meet people at the door. Building Department will continue to conduct business as they have throughout the pandemic. Parks and Rec, their spring newsletter is going out. Encourage people to take a look at it. A lot of innovative programming where people can socially distance outdoors and still be safe. Our golf courses are open. And also take a look at the newsletter regarding sites for COVID testing. The city's website site contains links to Surgeons Choice, all of the other service providers in the region, Beaumont, Meyer, the various drugstores, Henry Ford Healthcare System, McLaren, et cetera. We will continue to run full size page ads in the Southfield Sun, encouraging people to get vaccinated and to where they can get vaccinated. So that is all I have this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. This is Marceline in for Dawn tonight, and we have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. Just to piggyback on what our city administrator said about the closing, the city will be open. We have a small election on May the 4th. It's just one precinct with the Oak Park School District Millage. So we will be open May 1st from 7 a.m. to 3 p.m. The state mandated time that we have to be open. And the city would be open on March 3 for individuals to vote absentee and of course on Election Day, March 4. So the that would not affect individuals' right to vote. And other than that, we do have the filing deadline for individuals interested in city clerks, the office of the city clerk, the office of the city treasurer, office of the mayor and the city council seats, which four are available for that. The deadline is going to be Tuesday, April the 20th at 4 p.m. Thank you and good evening.
And just for clarification, you meant May 1st and May 3 that you'll be open, correct? Not March?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you for that correction. It would actually be May 1st and May 3. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to notify the the public. I just wanted to notify the, the public that notices were sent out from our Water Department for anyone who has a delinquent water balance as of the end of 2020. The balances need to get paid up by May 21, or else it will be rolled onto the summer tax bill, so people can still make their payments either online or over the telephone or by mail, and those payments need to be postmarked at least by May 21. Otherwise, that's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planner?
I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our City Assessor?
Hear me?
No, we can't hear you. Now we can hear you, can you? We can hear you now.
Okay, very good. Thank you, and good evening, Council. I would like to take this opportunity to provide just a little further information in regards to our single lot special assessment that you've scheduled for April 26. By Section 1.13 of the Single Lot Special Assessment as contained in the Code Ordinance, single lot assessments are individual fees that are outstanding or delinquent, and by ordinance, will be moved the individual property tax bills. With all special assessments, there is an appeal process. In this case, individuals must appear before City Council, as this is the public hearing. Prior to any further appeal made to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, someone so chooses. So if anyone should make contact with you, advise them that this is a required prerequisite should they want to go further. And thank you, Council, for the, for this opportunity to explain this further.
Thank you. Engineer? Our engineer must not be with us. Okay, we have nothing to schedule. Council, we do have an ordinance to enact?
Madam President, Councilman Cruz would like to move that we enact Ordinance Number 1734.
Support? It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to enact Ordinance Number 1734 for PZTA 21-0001, which is the Council Initiated Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris? Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Council, is there any other business before we conclude the meeting tonight? Any other comments or questions or anything from anyone? I'm hearing none. I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.